Yeah, he's back. Live?
Live.
All right, I'd like to call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 to order and ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you. Start with the roll call, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Uh, present.
Commissioner Olson.
Present.
Commissioner Elder.
Present.
Commissioner Steinhardt.
Present.
Mayor Paul, present. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. We have one communication, we received a, uh, a letter congratulating us on, uh, let's see, successfully passed the national certification to the city's investment policy. Proud to award us with a 2024 Investment Policy Certificate of Excellence Award for your commitment. Your commitment in establishing a comprehensive investment policy. There we go.
Yay.
Jumping all over the place, so Ethan was, uh, just, you know, good job, thanks for doing that, that came from the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada, so, good job. That was it for communications, now we'll move on to public participation, this is an opportunity for the public to address an issue that's not on the agenda. Please come forward to the microphone if you would like to make a comment.
Hi, my name is Lori Lisi and I live at 8775 Lincoln Drive, Huntington Woods, well, you know, Huntington Woods, um, anyway, um, I wasn't sure if I was gonna speak or not tonight, I was looking at the agenda you had last week and I saw that some people had spoken, it sounded like about having political activities in city property, and I'm actually here to ask you guys maybe to look at, um, room rentals here in the city. I am with Democrats of South Oakland County, we are the Chartered Democratic Club, Chartered Democratic Club for Huntington Woods, Berkeley now, we've added Berkeley, Oak Park, and Royal Oak Township, and we have a much easier time finding space, specifically in Oak Park and in Royal Oak Township, Berkeley, we're having trouble, their community center's pretty full, but we, the library's been very accommodating, but we have gotten bigger than those rooms hold, and we have tried often to go to the community center, and, um, I've talked to Commissioner Elder a little about this, they've always told us that they don't, um, give rooms out to political groups, um, and, you know, we could rent it as an individual, but I, I know there are recognized community groups, I don't think at this point we would fit within that category because we are not, because we're political, we're not a 501(c)(3), but I do think there's value in having engaged citizenry and encouraging that, and I also think there's great value in having these four cities, um, work together and have all these different kinds of people come together, so, um, and our group tries to move between the four cities regularly, so three months in one city, three months in another, and we have just been having trouble finding space in Huntington Woods, so, I don't know if you guys can look at your policies again, um, I, I have talked to Commissioner Elder, um, and I talked to Ethan Han, maybe, hi Ethan, just briefly, or maybe I just talked to you by email.
Yes.
Anyway, the only other thing I want to throw out there is I did this survey about parks and I would love for us to have a pavilion, I know we're not as big as Oak Park, but, um, we do have regular summer meetings and it's so nice to be able to, to be outside for, uh, you know, an annual gathering, so, um, I don't know, I should go to the Parks Committee and talk to them about that, but that's something.
Just wait, wait a little bit.
Wait a little bit.
Next few weeks, next few weeks you're gonna learn a lot about those things.
Okay.
Coming to an area near you soon.
Okay, well, yay yay, good for you guys if that's happening, and also, thanks for your public service, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a resident in Huntington Woods, I've been here for four years, I prefer not to state my name and address because I'm a safety risk, if you want me not to speak, I'm happy to tell you outside of the interwebs, um, and I'll tell you why I don't feel safe in a minute, and with every ounce of respect to my neighbor, I actually came to say the exact opposite that she said, um, and that's because there's been, uh, political groups holding events here that, uh, make us feel unsafe, and when, specifically, uh, as we all know, um, there's a huge issue regarding views regarding the war in the Middle East on both sides, lightning rod, uh, issue, we also know, related to that issue, there's rising antisemitism, uh, and, uh, terrorism against Jews in the United States, that's a fact, there's also been the events that you, I thought, very well addressed in the last meeting regarding Akers, well, that, the Akers event, that wasn't the first event in this town, and some of you may know who I am or not, but, um, there was an instance prior to that where, um, when I arrived on my street with my wife and 12-year-old daughter, there was a person with a switchblade cutting down kidnapped posters, and, um, they, I said, "Well, what are you doing and why are you doing it?", and he said, "Well, because we hate Jews", um, and, uh, I said, "I'm calling the police, you have a knife here", and he does a Heil Hitler salute and drives away, but before I said this, he said, "I want to come back again and again and again". The, um, what was scariest about that event was his self-righteousness as he spewed all the wrongs that Jews have done, that was scary, and, now, this is a bad person who addressed us, this is a bad person who attacked the Akers, and there's other bad people, a subset, who use a cause to cause terrorism, to attack, I don't think the city should be using their facilities for political groups that are inflaming that type of terrorism, terrorism against Jews in Huntington Woods, and I don't think that's a statement you want to make, so, like it or not, when, when there's an event by a political group, and this is a political group, they say they're a political group, they raise money when you walk in the door, um, and they have, they ask you to sign petitions, I've been to three events from the groups that are supporting pro-Palestinian causes, all, all three times, so it's a political group, and they're saying, "We are for", and they talk about the pro-Palestinian cause, but I will say, that is connected, it just is, to a bad subset of people who have attacked Jews everywhere and in Huntington Woods, and they threaten to come back and, again and again, and I just don't believe that the city should be making statements, pro-Israel or pro-Palestinian, and when you host events on our grounds and our facilities, that's what you're doing, and so I'm asking you to consider, what I actually heard about the policy was there's no political events, that the policy is, I think, I've tried to read the zoning ordinance, it's hard by the way, um, but I know there's no fundraising, and my interpretation of it, and frankly, I think yours from what I've heard, there's just not supposed to be political events, so that we appropriately, appropriately as a neighborhood, don't wade into such a lightning rod issue with violence attached to it here, and violence frankly against me and my family and my neighbors, this is largely Jewish neighborhood, we should not be inviting this year, thanks for, for listening, and I will provide my, my name outside of the sphere.
Will you, will you write it on there at least?
As long as it's not your public, be sure.
Oh, yeah, never mind, no, don't, if, you don't want it public, yeah.
Thank you. I don't want the guy coming back.
Any other comments? Thanks, with that, uh, public participation is closed, and, uh, we'll move on to the regular items of business. First item is a matter of considering authorizing the mid-year budget amendments, Ethan, do you wanna?
There's only a few, uh, this time around, typically it accelerates as we, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, what I wanted to highlight was, we don't, just because we don't usually do this, there's an excess of deductible line, which is anything that we are charged in our insurance policy more than what we're billed for, like the yearly renewal, uh, we had to, um, it was a $50,000, you want to explain it?
Yeah, we, we had something that was classified as a sewer backup, that was really a water main break that we had on Boardman, a series of water main breaks on Boardman that caused damage to a couple of properties with water blowing back through the residential sewer lines, it was kind of an odd incident that occurred, but because the, the, even though it was clean municipal water that was blown back through a sewer line, that's classified as a sewer backup, had to be cleaned and treated as such, so that fell under our deductible policy for our sewer backup charge, so we got, we got hit with a charge of $50,000, which is standard in our, uh, our, uh, policy through MMRMA, so it wasn't, it wasn't a sewer backup from a rain event, it was from a unfortunate water main break that we had, that we couldn't plan or do that again, but a water main broke and didn't blow water back into a residential property through the sewer line, so we had to budget for that expense that, obviously, we didn't know we were gonna hit this year.
Typically, general fund revenue, we do pretty well, because they try to budget pretty conservatively, so it'll probably come out in the wash, but I just wanted to highlight that too, and then also the, uh, recreation fund, so, as the general fund does subsidize the recreation fund, um, their, their fund balance is healthy, but there's different times when they get revenue depending on when there's programming throughout the year, different registration dates and stuff, so, I did have to do a few amendments in the recreation fund, but in the last few years, our revenue's been really good at the end of the year, so I'm expecting it to just kind of wash out of the whole balance, so, we're in good shape, just a few adjustments here, the next, uh, budget amendment group meeting will be in March, and then the final one in June, right before this goes ahead.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the mid-year budget amendments?
Some moved.
Second.
Any public comments? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is considering approval of the direct agreement with Palmar Enterprises versus Lanzo Construction Company to allow them to execute the remaining, um, amount of the original 2022 agreement originally made with Lanzo.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, yeah, quite a few years ago, we signed an agreement for a lot of work with, uh, with Lanzo, and part of that work was for some points who were repairs that were getting identified through Noah and Frouse for things that needed to be fixed, we had trouble ever getting that work completed, we were on Lanzo for a long period of time to come back and get this work completed, couldn't figure out why it wasn't happening, and then, kind of figured out last year that, uh, they were in the process of selling the firm to Paymore, so we began discussions with Paymore, Paymore understood they were picking up the obligation for this work to be done, uh, and to be done at the prices that we agreed to in 2022, so, uh, we looked at this internally through city administration, the work still needs to be done, if, and we're gonna get it done at 2022 prices, if we bid this out again, uh, we would have, the prices would have absolutely increased, we would have had an expense, not only have put this back out for bid, but also just construction prices have increased, so Paymore was eager to actually get this work done and completed, I think it's one of their obligations that they took on when they, when they purchased the company, so, um, and frankly, Paymore's already begun doing some of this work, we advised them that we haven't transferred this over yet, so the risk, the risk is on them for doing the work prior to us authorizing the payment, but it's work that needed to be done, um, they went back and confirmed as best as they could through the, uh, through televising these issues, these areas that the work still needed to be done, and it's being, being done, but, uh, formally in consultation with the, uh, city attorney, we needed to formally authorize Paymore to complete this bid, like I said, they're doing it at the 2022 prices, so, city administration feels this is the best interest of the, of the city as opposed to, uh, uh, bidding this out again, and they have complete confidence in Paymore can complete this work, and they're doing, making good progress so far.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission?
This could, I wish this could have happened two or three years ago, Mr. Mayor, is about all I can say, I mean, Lanzo was a complete disgrace, folks on Kingston that had their sewer cleaned had four-foot holes in their backyard because they wanted to raise manhole covers, pylon sat there for three years, Lanzo come out with more excuses and Walgreens got pills as to why they couldn't get it done, so finally, they said either fill the holes in, right, and you can dig four feet again if you need to access them, or raise the manhole cover so that everybody can move on, and, uh, finally, Paymore came out and took care of it, and I know you had to push hard to make that happen, so I appreciate that, but the, yes, goodbye, good riddance, and let's get this company in here that's actually willing to do the job.
And that was another, well, it was another reason frankly, because they had waited so long while we did, bent a little bit, let them begin the work prematurely, I, under the assumption, they, they understood the rest, but I said, "Yeah, this, this, this work needed to be done".
Yes, so I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is approval of a contract with the Berkeley School District to collect and distribute school tax monies as part of the 2025 tax levy and authorize the finance director to sign the agreement, this is a, an annual contract that we routinely sign. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is, uh, consideration of approving an agreement for IT services between Oakland County and the City of Huntington Woods and authorize the finance director to sign the agreement.
Yeah, so, um, this is a relatively routine, um, item, um, we've been finding that the county has been reviewing several contracts that we, that we're a part of, um, and this is one of them, and it's also up for renewal this year, there's just a few items that we, um, utilize through the county, county tax, Clemis, ARC GIS for planning, tax administration, and, uh, law enforcement purposes, um, these products allow the city to provide exceptional services to their residents, um, and basically it's just renewal, renewal and agreement we already have with Oakland County.
Do we have a motion to approve? Some moved?
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor, Clemis is being spun off as the independent authority in severing ties with the county, do you know how that will affect this agreement?
When that, I, I've heard the same story, uh, my assumption is when that happens, we'll need a separate agreement with Clemis as a separate entity.
Okay.
As this time, when it's time, this was a renewal, so this time it's still under the, the purview of Oakland County, but my assumption is, and Matthew and Comedy are going to, but I think when that's done, we would have to enter in a separate agreement with Clemis at that time, as a, as a separate entity. Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item numbers five is consideration of approving and authorizing the city manager to submit the required license application to the Bureau of Fire Services for the fireworks show to be held on July 4th, 2025.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul, I, I know at the last meeting, I know we had, uh, I wasn't here, but I know that we had approved a two-year agreement with Pyrotechnico, so I thank for the, thank the commission for that, this is simply the state license permit that we need to get in, uh, but I wouldn't take a minute to say, since that last meeting, uh, have been in communication with, uh, with Rackham, with the city of Detroit, made, made them aware of, uh, what the plans were, they're, uh, been very cooperative, Rackham's all set to go, they'd agreed to, uh, provide the porta-johns again this year, and of course, they obviously provided a lot of parking for that, that evening as well, so, I've had good cooperation with them, both through Public Safety and the DPW, uh, Pyrotechnico, this is, this will be their fourth year doing the show, and I, they've done a good show, so, uh, just wanted to update the commission that we have had those discussions with Rackham and everything seems to be on set, I am again in charge of the weather, so we'll have a nice evening, mosquito-free, everything should be in good, everything should be good. So, uh, thank, thank the commission and, uh, thank you for the two-year agreement, I think that was in the best interest of the city to get us on the book for '26, because that's gonna be a busy and event-filled year, summer, I think.
We have a motion to approve. So moved?
Second.
Sorry, second?
Yeah, sorry. Second? I heard it.
The zoo would like to meet with us too, as well, Mr. City Manager, just to talk about, uh, I'm sure they're looking at the best interests of the animals, I, I told them that we would get back to them.
I'd be happy to.
Have that conversation with them, yes. Okay, any public comment?
I didn't know I was gonna talk about this, but I do, I do, would love to see a drone show instead of the fireworks, I don't have a dog anymore, but Fourth of July was horrible, so, I know I had read about it somewhere and I haven't paid attention, so maybe you guys have talked about and have great reasons for not doing it, but, um, I would just love considering other ways besides the fireworks to celebrate the Fourth of July.
You want me to address that real quick, or, I mean?
Sure, do you know, I think?
Well, we did look into it, we even did the survey, maybe it was two years ago, asked people, "Would you be in favor of a, of a drone show over the fireworks?", and it literally came back 50/50, so there was some interest there, um, when we further investigated, the, the cost was really prohibitive, as a new technology, I think those costs are coming down, um, I think it will be probably more feasible, but, uh, we're paying, and not the, not the fireworks are cheap, they're, it's, we're about 32,000 or 33,000, I think, per year for that show, the drone show was double that or more, but I think, again, I think as, as, um, more companies start doing it, as, and again, technology improves, I think that cost will come down, and it is something, I, I think it'd be really cool, I think it's something we will investigate going further, but, we did agree for two years because 2026 is the 250th anniversary and a lot of events planned for that year, so we didn't need to commit for two years to guarantee we would be able to have a show for July 4th, but we haven't given up on the idea.
Okay, thank you.
I actually had pretty extensive conversations with the zoo about it, seeing if I could get them to help with the cost because it was so much more expensive, and haven't quite got them to do that yet, we'll keep talking. Any, uh, comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, uh, board and commission appointments, uh, we have two, uh, to make this evening, do we have a motion to appoint Tandy Jerkensen to the Anti-Racism Committee and Vincent Verna to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that would be an alternate position on the ZVA.
Some moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions?
Walk us through the qualifications and credentials on how people are evaluated to, um, put these boards.
Only qualification you need is to be a resident of the city of Huntington Woods and express an interest, um, in serving the city.
Okay.
We, we have a short interview that we do with residents who, uh, who apply, uh, just to get to know them, because we don't know everyone that lives in town, um, and, you know, specifically, what I'm looking for when we're talking to someone is that they don't have a single agenda that they're trying to get through, we want them to do what's in the best interest of the city as a whole.
Okay.
They complete an application too, with their background.
They do.
Credentials.
And now these positions have, um, like a tenure attached to them, or?
Three-year terms.
Three-year terms, okay.
You can serve a second term.
And after that, you can't serve anymore.
Well, you also try to find people who, you know, say at ZVA or something, or planning, you know, somebody who's, has an, you know, architecture background or construction background, you know, those, try to find relevant, you know, occupational, uh, factors, um, you know, ZVA is, uh, it's, uh, called quasi-legal, so we, you know, I've always looked to find if we can find a, a turn in somebody with that background, um, you know, but it, generally, it, it, there's, there's everything they said, but then there's the intangible, that, you know, what's the interest level, or, you know, why do you want to do that, and like Bob said, the only thing you want to avoid is, you know, somebody who, who's got a, an agenda that's, that's out to, you know, do something, and, and that, that would cause me concern because it's a group, you know, it's a political, actually, political body, but it's a, it's a, you know, uh, functioning organization, so, but, you know, a lot more thought goes in, it's not willy-nilly.
Okay.
It's, it's, and, and these interviews take a lot of time.
There, there was interviews today, right?
Three.
Yeah, three, okay.
Three people for one spot on the, uh, Anti-Racism.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City manager's report.
Well, oh, we done with the boards? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, just, just a couple of things, uh, Mayor, thanks, and one, I'm glad to be back and thanks for your patience, and I never thought I'd be so happy to return to work into a city commissioner, as I am, um, and you've probably heard it, if not, don't kill the message here, but there's gonna be a major closure of 696, uh, east, eastbound for a period of up to two years, uh, the state's been in contact with us, uh, that's gonna be roughly from Loser all the way to Woodward, and the official detour is gonna be, they're coming eastbound, down the lodge, all the way to the Davison, back up to 75, 696, which is gonna be done by absolutely nobody, nobody's gonna follow that detour, so, uh, we've already had the discussions with, uh, Public Safety, I mean, this is gonna increase traffic on local streets.
Yeah.
Um, uh, on 11 Mile and, and, and probably even 12 Mile, Coolidge, um, so we'll, we'll be prepared for that, I don't know what the impact's gonna be, other than I expect there's gonna be additional traffic, particularly, I think, through the summer months, um...
Lincoln as well, I think, isn't gonna catch some.
Yeah, I, I would expect that to be the same, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be prepared for that and make adjustments as needed, I also found out somewhat surprisingly that neither the zoo nor Rackham really had any prior heads up about this until I kind of forwarded them the shutdown notice and they didn't really know, so, the service drive will remain open, but it's, I, clearly, I think it'll still have an impact on, on both their operations, so, uh, I think the zoo in, in particular, and they're even looking at maybe modifying some of their summer events, um, because of that, so...
Isn't the service drive being shut down?
Uh, the service drive will remain open, at least for this, this summer, uh, they may have to shut it down in the future, but...
But I thought that sewer work they're doing?
My understanding is, I'll, I'll try to get...
They can't be shutting the service drive down.
I'm 100% sure they are, they just, the Water Resource Commissioner just obtained a permit to close the service drive from the zoo to past Rackham because of a necessary sewer main, major sewer main repair.
It is closed, it's closed now.
Yeah.
Oh, that may be for an emergency repair.
Is that gonna continue?
No, that's not part of it.
That's not part of it, it'll be done by that time, okay, all right.
It has to be, yeah, because it's, if you shut down the service drive, people literally can't...
Yeah, I'm like, how is this gonna work?
You couldn't get to Rackham.
So their repair will be done by the time, okay, good.
Yes, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chris, do you know if any of the 696 work is gonna have any, um, like noise remediation? Are they doing anything around, like, will the, will any of the work include reduction of noise in the surrounding communities?
There's, I hope so, there's a, there's a pre-con meeting coming up later this month, so I think we should get the answers to some of those, and I'll try to send it on... get answers to some of those, and I'll try to sit in on those meetings, even though we're not really impacted by that. We are on the border, so I'll ask, I'll ask about that, I'll ask about their plans, and if not, ask them to come up with a plan for that. So the effect may be more minimal than I think. I don't know, but I anticipate, I anticipate it's going to increase traffic here, so we're prepared for it and we'll work with it. I was, there was a meeting request asking about the impact's going to be on local businesses. I, I don't know, but our job will be just try to get, that's going to be through traffic. They're going to be, well, they're going to be angry, they're really going to get around it, they're going to go somewhere else. We'll get them through as quickly but safely as we can, and also protect pedestrian traffic as well. It makes me even more happy, I think, that that signal that commission's going to be willing to approve is going to be going, and I don't have a doubt, I think that'll, that'll help control that as well. So, so there's that. I, I didn't close it, it's not my, not my, not my closure, but the work certainly needs to be done. So also, let the commission know, we did receive, I think around seven or so proposals so far for the master plan for the Parks and Rec that council has approved. I know there's a committee, so I'm just, I'm just now compiling those, just coming back, I'm compiling all those and looking at those, and I'll get with the subcommittee to set up a date to review those and begin interviewing of potential firms. So I was just a little bit weak behind with that, being out of the office, but we're getting on that, so thanks for agreeing to be a part of that, and we'll get, get that information to the subcommittee. So that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions from the commission, from the city manager?
Outside of this few items here, we had a discussion about the need, or my, my suggestion that we have a RFP for the pool store for the, or the cafe at the pool for the summer. The last year, we had one, it didn't go well, and we ended up running it ourselves, and I feel that my own personal view is, we're better off seeing if there's a qualified entity that wanted to, knew about doing that sort of thing and wants to run the pool store. So my understanding is that you are going to create an RFP, and that next month we would approve it.
If that's council's, commission's wish, I mean, I could, we still have the RFP from last year, I modified it for this year's.
Oh, yeah, but we're not voting on it tonight, but.
And I was saying, I, talking quickly to Parks and Rec staff, they had, operating on the assumption they were going to have to run it again, I've already been making some plans, so they would have some ideas on that. I think we already had this discussion, I would, my suggestion would be, if you want to, if you want to do that, we didn't have a lot of interest in it last year. I think Parks, you know, Parks and Rec should probably be a qualified bidder to put their, put their own plan in on that, too. They, they have ideas, certainly that was done hastily and put together at the last minute last year, and they have some ideas to bring, bring more items back and to upgrade the menu, so I think they should be, I think they would have a proposal to look at that as well. So I'll take the direction for the commission, if you want to do an RFP for that again, we can, just, the time's available and the document already exists, we can do that again.
Well, we can't vote on it now?
No, we can't. I certainly think we need to have some discussion about that RFP, because it called for some, maybe things that weren't perfectly clear, it called for a percentage of profits, and I don't know if that's the best way to go, maybe we should look at a flat rate that someone's going to pay us for use of our building and electricity and equipment.
Well, my feeling on it is, we should, that is something that, that there are businesses that do that, and if we can get a business that does that, that's better than our being in the business of doing something we shouldn't be doing, whether or not we, you know, I don't know that we make money or lose money on it, but I, I mean, it's just to me, that's something that if we had a vendor who could do it, knew how to do it, and that wasn't their business, that's better, I think, for the city, better for the residents, and more fiscally responsible.
I will just tell you really quickly, the city's going to, the city's going to lose money on that, and one of the primary reasons why is that our, our policy has been, if the pools open, the cafes open. And there are times you can make money at that cafe, particularly weekends.
Sure.
Busy summer days. There are days when it's 64 degrees and cloudy, and I know very well people who worked there who were like, I tried not to fall asleep, and I sold two Snickers, and that's, that's what you're going to do, so. That's going to be true whether we run it or somebody else.
Well, let's see what we get.
So I think, you need to think, if you do the RFP, I think, I agree with the mayor, we need to probably firm up some of the terms, based on our experience last year, and one of those to strongly consider is, what hours would you be willing to have an operator there? Because there are, like I say, there are times you're definitely going to make money there, there are times that it's, it's going to be a money loser, so whether that's us or anybody else operating it, that's going to be true.
All right, next topic, Mr. City Manager. I know, let's get you off the RFP here for a second. We discussed the, there's, those of you who haven't noticed, on the corner of Boardman or Hendry Rether and Woodward, there was a light post that was taken out by a driver. Apparently, two cars from the northbound lanes collided and wound it up, wound up knocking down the light pole. That happened on December 10th, and personally, I don't see why it should take seven weeks for MDOT to have to make a repair to the light post, which they're going to be 100% fully reimbursed for, because I have seen the police report, both of the vehicles involved are insured, which means that they're, MDOT or whoever's, I'm not even sure whose post that is, but I talked to the chief today, Public Safety Director, he indicated they were notifying, they, and both MDOT and DTE, I'm not sure, but it's a very busy area there, and it requires illumination, and seven weeks without it, in my humble opinion, is too long. So you indicated you're going to follow up on that.
Yes.
And we did contact Senator McMaro's office today and asked her for help, too, with respect to calling MDOT, telling him to do that.
And the city, there was a tree that was damaged there, too. The City of Huntington Woods, it just, we just took care and fixed the tree, because it was right around Christmas time, it had been three or four weeks, and the tree wasn't taken care of. So even though it wasn't ours, we just cleaned that up, but the pole's still there, and you're right, it's been unusually a long period of time for that to be non-illuminated.
And, and I don't know whether contact with the Berkeley city manager, Berkeley Chief of Police is in order, but there was a news story today, if you didn't see it, that there was a police chase that started in Oak Park, that came down Lincoln and went down Berkeley, all the way through Huntington Woods at very high speeds, apparently on Monday. I'm not sure which day.
It was on, it was on Sunday.
On Sunday, about 3:00 in the afternoon, 70 miles an hour on Berkeley. The car crossed over into Berkeley and collided with a house, and the reason for the chase was because there were outstanding warrants, according to the license plate check. And that is, to me, absurd, that there would be a police chase through a residential neighborhood, any residential neighborhood. But I just would like to, whatever you want to call it, lodge an official protest, or however we do it, that we think that that's a terrible policy to allow that kind of a chase over that type of circumstance, endanger residents and people like that, and that's just one, one, one inch away from terrible tragedy. So I would encourage a communication from you to the Berkeley Chief of Police or Berkeley City Manager, they need to take a serious look at that policy.
Yes, I'll just clarify for the record, that it is the policy of the City of Huntington Woods Public Safety Department, in an incident like that, we would not pursue.
Not.
At, at high speeds.
Over warrant.
Same, same for Beverly Hills Public Safety, where we're looking for, but every community has their own policy, and unfortunately, with these communities in close proximity, those, that was a three jurisdiction chase that didn't go very far. It ended, ended poorly, it could have ended, could have ended much worse.
Horrible. So what, to the attorney, what right does another community have to pursue a fleeing felon or whatever in our community at a high rate of speed?
There, there is law, and I haven't had to deal with it in a while, but there is law about crossing jurisdictional boundaries when, when crime has started in your particular community, but the exact dynamics of it, in terms of whether there's specific circumstances that is or isn't allowed, I don't have off the top.
I'd be curious, I mean, Commissioner Oldman raises a good point. I mean, you know, this was like an armed robbery, or there was a kidnapped child in the vehicle, I think by all means we pursue it, but this is like some old traffic ticket, parking ticket, you know, bench warrant. I don't want them speeding through, chasing somebody who didn't pay a ridiculous parking ticket for backing in angled parking in downtown Royal Oak, hypothetically. You know, I don't want someone's house crashed into or someone's child run over. So I mean, I think we do need to talk to the Chief Pazowski and the statute, and what are they allowed to come in here pursuing, and what are they not allowed to?
Yeah, I think it's generally, I think it's a half mile in your jurisdiction, you have the right to. Yeah, it's something. I think that's the state. Like that, but I'd, I'd be happy to take a closer look at it and see if there's anything regarding circumstance, specific situations to bolster any communication.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does that give you any comments?
Yes, sir. I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Comment's out.
Sounded like Commissioner Rosell there.
Yeah, no, no, you and Commissioner Janks, I think.
Got rolling, man.
You got the wrong commissioner. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one comment, and that is, I've talked to some of my colleagues about this, but I do think we need to revisit the room rental policy. I think the residents here raised some good points. I mean, we, we definitely are up against, as I've been told in the past, you know, First Amendment issues, you know, if you allow this religious group to do it, you have to allow the Klan to do it, if you allow this, these folks to do it, Billy or Suzie gets to have a birthday party, it's either all or nothing kind of thing. So I really need to understand, you know, both statutorily and, and through the courts, like the legal landscape, you know, our current policy, and where can we go to ensure that we're allowing things to happen that, you know, our, our, by residents, birthday parties, graduation parties, those types of things, but we're limiting, if it's possible, we're limiting other types of activities, you know, from whether it be, say, outside groups, or whether it be of a political nature, but I certainly do not want to be the decider, and I think I speak for my colleagues, in what's political, what's not political, you know, who we're allowing, who we're not. I mean, I'm sure the courts have spoken on this, but.
Oh, they have.
Yes, ad nauseam. So can you start working on review of our current policy, review of a potential draft policy in light of statute, court opinions, et cetera, so we can revisit this at a future meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. I've done this work for, for other communities as well, and there's all kinds of directions you can go in it. It all comes down to how you designate your various forums, you know, you can, they can choose, building by building, park by park, room by room, whatever you want it to be, decide what types of activity you want there, and, and the extent to which you would allow it. But, but once you open up to a particular type of activity, it's true, you know, if one group has that access, then another group with similar, you know, types of programming or membership or whatever would also have that access. There also can be distinctions between non-pay, no-fee rentals versus fee rentals. We've got all the law regarding campaign finance, that controls what types of political activities that can happen, so there, there's all kinds of ways we can go with that.
Well, actually, actually, what the, I want to say the bigger question, but a nuanced question, and brought up by our visitors tonight, and it's been brought up in the past, is where you have a resident that goes and pulls a permit for public space, for example, the space in the library in the basement, which is used for all kinds of public events, art shows, I've seen all kinds of things down there, various groups, things like that. And the issue becomes when a resident of the city goes and pulls the permit in their name, but there's an outside group, and this is what we've heard repeatedly here in the last few months, and I'm hopeful now with the ceasefire situation that, that this, this debate may come down somewhat, but that, that is the nuanced issue, and it was brought, you know, several people called, myself, the mayor, and other people, and said, but, you know, you have to find out if there's a group behind it, then the next question is, do you, can you ask if there's a group behind it? There's, there's a variety of First Amendment, you know, the city. I know that my close friend, Robert Sessler, who passed away two weeks ago, was a, you know, regular free consultant to us on constitutional questions like that, and I remember him adamantly saying, just, the city cannot be seen as endorsing the activity. And then, you know, people suggested, well, if somebody comes and gets up in public comment and says, I'm having, I'm showing a movie at the library, because they're speaking at a city commission meeting, does that translate into city endorsement? And you're now retired, as the colleagues said, no, it doesn't. But these are some of the issues that are, that are coming up now, and they're a little bit outside the types of issues that we considered before.
For sure.
So that's why I agree with Joe, I think it would, it'd be a good idea to take a look at that.
Yeah, and that's an interesting situation, if they're pulling a permit as a private individual, but then they're turning it into an open to the public event.
Well, not just open to the public, but going on behalf of themselves.
Right, yeah.
Getting the permit, but the, you know, they're doing it as part of their membership in a society or group or whatever, and I'm just asking these, these questions, because, you know, it's the balance point of, you know, can you or can't you, prior restraint, exposure to the city for, you know, making a mistake in that regard. So, you know, this, I, I, I agree, I think it's a good time for, for an assessment of that, and also, the overall assessment, is, is the policy fine as it is, and your recommendation wouldn't change.
Right, I'm happy to do that. Lots I can bring to you on that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, even through my surrogate Commissioner Oldman.
If you could have articulated it, we wouldn't do you.
I thought I did, I didn't necessarily know I needed it repeated.
If you had more time, you're going to write a charter.
Okay, I mean, you seem to be all right.
Mr. Elder?
Yeah, not to harp on it, but in addition to that, I think this has been a conversation, like, you know, when we first started getting questions prior to this meeting, right? And I want the public to know that we've been trying to be very thoughtful and careful and do the right thing, and, you know, on top of the legal perspective, I think it's really important to tie in the fact that each building, as you said, has its own policy, and I think it needs to be holistic, it needs to be connected, and then you also have the school district. With Burton Field, that's a unique situation, where we manage it, but they own it. So I, you know, as you're assessing this public policy, I think it's really important to look at all of these other factors as well, and I know Chris and Ethan have, we've already been talking about this, for I feel like over a year now. So I'd really like to see a recommendation from a legal perspective, from a public policy perspective, and from an administrative perspective, because I've also heard that from the staffing side, it's been, you know, putting on, supporting these events, that also has to make sense, and to make sure that there, we have the systems and the staff in place to be able to do these, so it's not just a legal consideration of all of these things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Stainhart?
Well, while we're making asks for First Amendment-related policies, something that's come up in the past, that I really think we need to move on this year, is a social media policy, thinking about issues where posts made by city staff were later modified, what types of events are being advertised by the library versus, you know, what is or is not considered a city event, hundreds of photos of children from our community posted on open Facebook groups, so I think it's really behooves us to also get that solidified this year as well.
You thought you'd just be sitting at a couple of meetings a month for that.
You're, you're rolling right into my wheelhouse, so I'm happy to make this my first full set of activities.
All right. I'm just going to welcome you back, Chris. Thanks for being here, it's good to have you back, and we're glad to see you're doing so well, so.
Thank you.
We're ready to go to work.
Give me some stuff to do, it's good.
All right. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.